This meeting to order is a special meeting for training. Um, so we'll let you, I mean, it has to do with basically electronic vehicle sales service, those types of things because we know EVs are coming. Uh, they're coming faster than some of us may think they are. And we just don't know what we don't know about the whole EV marketplace. Storage, batteries, stuff like that. We can tell you about gasoline and those kind of things, but storage of batteries and all of those types of things is something, at least I'm not. So we're hoping we can give a little education. We have a number of people here from the fire department, our planning board, uh, and a couple of staff. And of course, our clerk, John. So we've got to go through that, give a key overview, and then we'll start asking questions from there.
Great.
Okay.
Um, a quick little handout here, it's not going to be long, I promise you, it's going to be about five or 10 minutes. And then we'll just give you a save you a little time maybe, uh.
Yeah, make sure the court knows your name so we can get it down.
Sir, John, I know, I, Dave, and Tony.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome. So basically, what, what we're going to hope to, is just give you a quick overview. Sure. There. Two more, I'm not sure I have enough to go around. See how we can. Um, okay, so obviously, as I said, we'll go through real quick, I don't want to bore anyone with this. But as you said, uh, the reason why we're funny today is because it's our business. We sell pre-owned cars, um, and it is taking off very fast, as you can see on the first slide there. Uh, you know, support future growth, definitely, we want to be in the community to do that. EVs have positioned for very vast growth, customer demand. Uh, federal and state government support is really getting behind it. Obviously, we know that there's going to be, uh, reduce maintenance, safety question, and charging stations. It's kind of like, uh, the bullet points that we want to discuss today. Uh, next slide, it just shows you, uh, how quickly the demand has gone up for EVs. In fact, um, EV registration, this is right off of the, uh, automotive news search sixty percent in the first quarter of 2022. I'm sure that has a lot to do with gas prices, but, uh, so a few things here, a few takeaways from this slide here. Uh, and you can read here to yourself, but nationally, there's only forty-eight thousand chargers and only six thousand DC, which are quick chargers, that we hit you on the road or down the road. Similar what you see at Eastview Mall, uh, in twenty minutes, uh, so very underdeveloped.
And the Eastview Mall chargers are fast chargers, right?
Correct.
The ones, but their only protect will be a correct.
What does that target across the street in the Walmart or Plaza are for?
But they're not AC, are they?
They are.
Oh, they are AC, okay.
Yeah. Uh, there's a lot of, obviously, uh, buzz around the performance of these vehicles. I'll attest to that, you've driven a Tesla or a Rivian or any of those. Uh, it's, it's a totally different driving experience.
Yeah, I don't know, I've talked about the dealership for what you tested. Uh, we have, we have quite a few downtown three-day theaters. But the difference in performance, and I think that's a capability in, um, a lot of the people out there, is amazing. They're so fast, there's no shit, I mean, go from zero to sixty in seconds.
That's all current ever driven.
Oh, my gosh, it's amazing, yes. Silence, and it's just, it does more than the computer does. It's, it's amazing. So stable, the, uh, the weight as well as centered in the movement, so the handling.
And low.
The combo, wow, and low, yeah, so low ground.
It takes not a lot of energy, I mean, it does take a lot of energy, but as far as the cost perspective, it's about seven or eight dollars to charge a Model Three Tesla for three hundred miles compared to, I don't know what your normal sedan now is to fill up eighty dollars, so you're at a tenth of the cost to get your three hundred miles out. And I think everyone wants to have a greener environment, so there is a lot of, uh, you know, support around that from environmentalists and people who are against the fossil fuels.
And I just want to throw out there, because everybody brings a stuff, you've probably heard it, that they all say like, well, you know, you're getting your electric from a dirty grid. So it's really not, you know, it's not as dirty as you think, but even if you're getting your electric from a very dirty as grid, you're still far greener than a gasoline car, because there's zero telemarketing missions. And that overcomes, even if you're on the worst grid, which we're not here.
Unfortunately.
But, um, even in some parts of the country, we're still further ahead, you know, from, from a green standpoint and, you know, green house.
Um, next slide, this is the federal and state government support, basically. Um, that bill that was just passed, with seven point five billion invested to put this charging infrastructure throughout the rest of the country. Uh, they just announced a seventy-five-hundred-dollar federal tax credit if you buy a new EV. New York added another two thousand to that. Uh, they've also, uh, uh, their governor in July, uh, passed a bill, putting twenty-five million for charging infrastructure. And through ways, you know, maybe discounts and all sorts of things when they put up your superchargers if you're in a green state or a EV car. So the next slide is charging stations around us. And these are the DC stations, they're the ones that people are looking for. Uh, these are the stations that will charge your car in about twenty minutes. Uh, as you can see, uh, locally, there are stations available in Victor, Fairport, Puntill, Newark, Kistler, Geneva, Waterloo. Um, uh, it's interesting, they're doing, the state is doing a, uh, a test in Fairport, New York, one of the first counties in state, um, to supplement, uh, their DC stations and try and get, uh, obviously, that town to convert over to clean energy as quick as possible. May have to do something like Airport Electric, I'm not sure, but possible figure. Yeah, um, what everyone's afraid of is, is, is just what the next one says, about sixty-one percent of all people. Greatest barrier to purchasing is where am I going to charge, how am I going to charge, and how long can I go? And those things are definitely coming now. Uh, they're going by the wayside as more and more of these are charged. Currently, okay.
I was just going to say, the second, that's another one barrier, it's entering this range. And they're overcoming that really quickly too, because you see cars all the time now that have three hundred plus miles on a single car. So it, it's, it's just amazing how fast it's ramping up, like mentioned earlier, like it's coming.
Yes. Zero, oh, already in.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, EV registrations, we checked this out, now this was as of, I believe, uh, April of this year. There's, there's, uh, almost a thousand people in Ontario County that have EVs. Uh, we, we didn't, uh, uh, we didn't break it down, obviously, the Farmington could get that information, but Monroe County has about fifty-seven. Uh, one thing we wanted to point out here too is, uh, we plan to put these supercharging stations up, um, as a part of our business, but it would be no cost to the town, these would be public access to anyone in the town that wants to use it. Uh, I, I know there's a development bonus across from us, professional building, I'm sure. So the number of those professional people may have an EV, uh, but, uh, we've been, you know, we've been selling Teslas in Farmington now for four years. Uh, we have stage-two chargers that are up against the building, Scott, we have one about eight, it's whatever you, you know, eight, uh, station chargers.
Those are just below the DC one.
Correct, correct.
And one is just like your regular thing to count to twenty.
Right.
So, um, we've sold, uh, I didn't even sell them on the Teslas, uh, it was our fastest-moving product all spring. Um, and, uh, there's definitely, you know, when we saw that, we saw the demand for it.
Now, are you selling new or used?
Well, nearly new, some of them have two hundred miles on them, a hundred miles on them, uh, trying to get the flow line as possible, um.
Technically, they're used.
Technically, they're used, yeah.
But the warranty, they're still good, and that's an important point that we'll talk more about in the slide.
Uh, for ourselves, before we got into the business, we did a lot of research. Scott, the member of the, of Henry, the fire department, we had a lot of, had questions we were asking ourselves. Uh, we went to the NS, uh, their NTSB website, and onto a number of NFDA's website, trying to do as much as we can on safety. This is what they say, uh, that, uh, basically, as the gas combustion engine, there's about fifteen hundred buyers for a hundred thousand vehicles, where it's fully electric cars only have twenty-five for a hundred thousand. Buyers are worried because the EVs are designed with safety devices, isolate the battery, disable the electric system, not a problem. Uh, no one's saying that they're easy to put out, we're not saying that, but we're just saying that the percentage is, I don't know if you did the math, you're a hundred times more likely for a gas combustion, uh, engine to catch fire when there is an electrical car. For the simple fact that there, there is no, uh, there's, there's no spark, there's no fire, there's no combustion going on, it's electric. It's also a safety, I mean, the, the second one's safer, safer drive, there's, uh, as you can see here, there is forty percent lower conventional, uh, miles that, uh, uh, they're reported in the data, people injuries claimed in their cars. Um, and, uh, as, as we go on to the next few slides here, um, I think one of the things that was misconception is that you can't put these fires out. Once they start, you just, you just have to burn. Uh, that's not true. Uh, what they, what they do require is for players, fighters to know exactly where the battery is. They do require more water, the whole idea about putting on a battery fire is that it needs to cool for a longer period of time than it's out. Uh, and as I said, this is, uh, here's the website that we pulled it down at the bottom here, the NFDA. Uh, invite anyone to log on if they want to know more about what they're saying about this. And, uh, so quote out what we saw, uh, on the video here, the EV fires are considered, uh, not any more dangerous. There's, there's no explosion on these EV fires. Uh, you know, it's not where it's, uh, uh, where you're going to get the dunes or whatnot, uh, that you would in a gas combustion engine. Uh, uh, but as I said before, water is in fact a distinguishing agent, although there's more needed to put them out. Uh, they also did a controlled burn at the University of Maryland, where they took a Tesla, uh, and they ignited it, and they measured for many, many, many hazardous, uh, uh, respiratory, uh, uh, fumes that came off of it. And the only thing that they, uh, said was it's the same tube, uh, that come off of a regular fire, which carbon dioxide is layers. That goes into carbon monoxide, so those were the only two fumes detected, vapors detected, that's actually uh, the correct term for that is. Uh, they also, uh, mentioned that the only way that you're going to shock yourself putting out a fire uh, is if you place yourself, uh, to complete the electrical circuit. So I mean, you have to cut the wire, and obviously, hold the wire and hold some other component so you can completely circle. But here was, the firefighter went in, put the hose and the metal that's on it, and he touched the body of the car or the electricity would go back through the, the nozzle from the water and shock that goes back in the truck. That's not true. They've tested it, that doesn't happen. As I said, the only way they're going to get shocked is if they complete the circuit, uh, themselves. And, uh, as, as you know, here, um, you know, like we said before, uh, they're, they're, just as you would put out a regular fire, you're, and it just takes an awful lot more water to put out these fires.
For a longer time.
For a longer period of time.
I think, I think the bottom line is it's a training issue. So they, they were saying it's not any more dangerous, but it's definitely a unique characteristic that requires completely different training.
And one of the problems that they had was that the manufacturers didn't let anyone know pretty much at the agencies how you need to address a fire in an actual car. The first year that happened, happened, uh, two thousand seventeen, happened in Los Angeles, California. They showed the fire been walking up to the car, they sprayed it throughout conventionally, they were spraying it on top of the car, whatnot, where they had access from the top of the car where the battery was. They decided to compartment where the passengers are, flood that situation, cool down those batteries. They just approached it in the same manner that I guess you would in, in traditional fire, like Scott would, or, or trying to show them back here. So they put out a hundred other car fires, and it's a little different approach. Uh, the next one we're going to talk about, the next slide is, is just about, so everyone understands, uh, we're not going to do any battery service, we're not getting anywhere near these batteries. And the main reason is federal mandate states that every EV company that sells a EV in the United States has to have a minimum of eight years and a hundred thousand mile warranty on the car. So whether you buy the Ford Lightning, or the Ford Mach-E, or Tesla, or Rivian, or Lucid, they all have to have at least an eight-year, hundred-thousand-dollar warranty. So in our situation here, we've never run across a battery situation yet in the cars that we sold, but I will, I will tell you, the first thing we can do is not, you know, burden the cost on us to repair the car. Because in fact, the manufacturer, the Tesla, the Ford brought it, we find a dealership that can service it, we now can service it.
These are the biggest fires, wipers, just the regular wear files. On gasoline.
Yeah. Um, but with the, you know, with the EVs here, uh, there's no oil change, so, uh, we have, you know, no oil, so to speak. Brake maintenance is very low, um, because obviously, as many of you, I'm sure, golf before invented a golf car, and say if you put off decelerator and slow itself down, you don't need to apply the brakes. Um, no exhaust system, so we don't have to replace mufflers with catalytic converters. These are all products that Scott and I deal with every day. We have made a list of, of what we do at AutoLift, uh, in the maintenance to sell cars more than anything. Uh, I think we find that every car needs an oil change, every car has usually a brake cap. And, uh, some of the cars need exhaust systems, but, uh, not, not in this space with these vehicles. Uh, and there's no spark, obviously, no sparks plugs or wires. Uh, so, there again, what you're, uh, just trying to point out as far as, uh, the maintenance of these vehicles. Um, in the four years we've been already selling these, uh, it, it is just what these, uh, it's just tires. I mean, you don't count a break job, it's Tesla, I mean. You did one, these are the first one. That's the guy that did it. So I mean, typically, we look at these vehicles in, in maintenance slides, and that's like, right? So I'm a part-time firefighter, and obviously, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a mechanic, I trade. So, you know, when you start looking at a vehicle and say, okay, how do we maintain these cars? There's, there's open syllables, there's nothing, there's nothing that, that's in the development. All you have is basically, you have brakes, you have tires, you have wipers, or a radio, there's really not much of these cars. Uh, it's all electronic driven, right? So they hide that, it's a big computer. Um, and that's, you know, and because of that, being a used car facilitator, you know, there's no way we can service every, every making model, BMW, VW, they all have something. So we just couldn't strategically and economically be able to service somebody. So we're going to take care of the easy things, which is all different than taking it down to the shop garage there. They have to use oil every piece of your, same thing, but that's what we're going to do, what we can do to the car would be basic maintenance. Inspection, oil changes, things like that. And then with the EV section, all we're going to do is check out the inspection items, which is your lights. You know, things of that nature.
Right.
I think it's going to be above our, our scope of, our scope of repair, is going to go back to the manufacturer, because obviously, number one, they're trained to do them, and secondly, they're the tools.
Yeah, it's going to warrant you if you didn't file a warrant.
Yeah, it's a fixed better size, right?
At least for now, until we get to the, until we start coming out of warranty, then.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think at that point, if you point out, say, years from now, uh, probably fifty percent of all the cars will be driving, whether you want to admit it or not, will probably be EVs. Um, just due to, like I said before, if, if you, if you drove one of these products, um, it, it would be hard, you know, and, you know, just, I love small gasoline, I drove in the business. You know, I love everything about, like, a, an ice, like, you know, through a combustion engine. Uh, but the performance, uh, and the affordability of, of day-to-day, many consumers are hurting to be with, you know, so.
Cool. Okay, let's start over with staff and see if you guys have any questions to come off the top of your heads. Ken?
Um, how is the DC current voltage? I know alternating currents have been around, but how is the DC?
For the, for the charger.
Um, I mean, like a vehicle or car, the DC. It's not that they're getting it, but I just don't know what it is.
Well, we're, um, we're working with, um, RGE and, um, and, uh, where's the closest stop by today? Um, and.
I sort of.
I sort of. Um, we've already been at the site a few times, um, they are handling all the infrastructure. Um, and I'm not quite sure exactly, I'm sure that, you know, that how the charging station itself works, I'm not quite sure, but uh, I, I've charged a number of cars at our dealership already, uh, and I'll tell you, I would, I would let my nine-year-old daughter plug one in before I had a pump of gas, right? They're very easy, they just clip in. Uh, but to answer the question on the DC, uh, I hope I'm answering this right, but that's all we're doing, it is teaming up with RGE, there is an incentive. Um, we, we, uh, I think our portion to put in these, we're, we're going to put in three superchargers that each have, uh, two attachments, or you can do two cars in each supercharger. Our overlay will be around fifty thousand out of pocket, the rest is covered by grants and what the state's going to enforce. Um, and to be quite honest with you, it's a cost you probably don't have to incur because, uh, these charges, these stage-twos causes severely helping install, and, and we were fine with that. But we thought from a community standpoint, um, why not? Why not put an out front? We've heard the plan for the Farmington market district. Uh, we don't want people leaving Farmington to charge a car at Victor or whatever, just let them stay here. And now, simply, Grant's team thinks we have great success on three thirty-two, we want to stay in, uh, in this town and, uh, and, uh, we're willing to, you know, put a little money up front so we can make it, uh, as we said, for destination after a car, I don't know if we can handle that, but uh, I think we can get you some information on those charging stations and send them over to you.
Well, maybe something that.
You know, we certainly want some more.
Yeah.
About them.
Yeah. Yeah, we can run it out of the, yeah.
Well, versus alternating.
Right.
Yeah, it, it's, well, it's, from my understanding, at least, it's a direct current, so normally, you're, we come off of it, rather than go through a transformer, and you find alternating, so it's considered safer, so less of it. So DC is definitely a lot more powerful, but that's why, um, we have to hire qualified third-party people directly with RGE and RGE. We do all the infrastructure, um, but pretty big about it, because it is pretty powerful.
I did do this, and it's Google, and you know that Google is right. They do say that the battery can explode. If they do catch on fire, well.
They can, they can catch on fire, there's two reasons, one's there's either short circuit or a vector defect.
Right.
Um, I, I think the key is though that it's extremely rare, but when it does, there's much more of a challenge than that.
I'm sure the player will tell me. No way you're about.
And they will.
So will regular.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they shorted a regular battery, well, they're, if the gas is in the battery, they did, well, it's, so I mean, you, you know, everyone wanted to hear, and probably a capacitor is something that they'll be using different work, uh, DG to H2.
Yeah. Anything else, Ken?
So my other question, it's also in regards to the chargers. Do they have much current to these, is there some protection that had to be around them for safety reasons?
Yeah, there's, uh, they're working with, uh, a group that, uh, works indirectly with RGE installing these, and we have to put a concrete pad. Uh, and, uh, I believe there's some kind of barrier, whether there are posts, not posts, or something around, so you can't, obviously, back into these chargers or whatnot, but there definitely is safety requirements that go alongside these chargers.
I would think there'd have to be some kind of elevation drainage, so you're not standing in a pool of water for them.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's, as I said, it's, it's, uh, it, it's the technology that, that we're farming out to the professionals that know exactly how they're doing with these things and its own. Yeah, to, to that point, you know, just the, the stage-two charge we have, um, you know, we're just having them model them in the building, turn model them, they'll fly a park line. They don't really, they, they look at it, they have people, they're going to the shop, when they have to complete the circuit, the way that the connectors are acting, it's almost impossible for these to complete the circuit. And I know it's one of those, it's not fault, they're wrong, or things with, you know, they're, they're no inside, it's just power off, and then put something in, draw off, and see if it sees a spike or something going on. You know, I'm not saying somebody could go put their top on it or do something crazy, but, but people do straight things, right? Yeah, I think, but, you know, for that point, it would take an awful lot of bad things to happen.
Let's go to the board, then we'll come back to the fire department and tell their questions.
I got two fingers.
Oh, well, you put you one, one is the board, and one is the fire department. I know, I know.
Um, are there any plans for like level twos at that facility as well, just to put some of the hydrants that are not purely, you know, might just, you can't use ones fast, so they're like, you have to do something a lot of this group, so, yeah. So is there, is that something you guys can think of? Yeah, our, our, our plan originally was not to have superchargers up, um, just for the cost. And, uh, as, as, uh, and we have her set up at three thirty-two, we were thinking of doing the same thing, just putting a bunch of level twos for our inventory. Uh, you don't need a vast charge, obviously, on those. Um, but here again, you know, just, uh, yeah, we'll definitely have level twos on the building for our inventory. Yeah, well, and I guess that's what I was trying to think, you know, I'm assuming you're probably going to charge them, they're easy fast, so I mean, I'm one of your students. Those you, right, I mean, that's things for the customer, which is probably eight, because like, what they have set up on the true layout, right?
Right.
Um, so if they're doing that, I guess with the level two, I do know that's a, I haven't seen that way, maybe the level two, so I was.
Yeah.
Probably for that, for some grants, maybe for that, isn't that?
Yeah, so we, we actually have the level two that we have at our, at our firm, sort of how, are basically, they're all basically pretty charging, but so they'll let the car, so they're wanting a lot of weight for your car to charge to do that. Um, and that's, you know, it's basically upon us to decide if we want to charge you that or not. Um, typically, this is more of a, a convenience program. I mean, I, I don't know what the cost is, and we have to see what the numbers off and down. Obviously, we're going to try to recruit some of that initial investment at some point. Um, but this is more for communities for the community, and obviously, more for our, our customers.
Nice.
So.
I think it's important enough too that we see hydrants as, um, sort of a, a short-term transition. We, we don't focus on them, we're definitely more focused on fully base, um, and it's more of a sort of transition vehicle out there for people to become people, you know, take the next step.
And the range they go.
Exactly. But you can see like range is improving and it's.
I mean, three hundred miles, that far, I guess, you know, you're going to have to do separate, a lot more, more of those people.
From I-6 to Florida, they move.
Um, but there's a million safety compliance factors, but they have to also reach, so they're not there yet, but once they do.
The other question I had is further more of a so the argument was chargers are going to have advertising, see, other, uh, rather than, they're actually in charge of advertising on the charger itself, you know, so.
Meaning changeable copy side will be.
Copy side, you know, like advertising or, um.
We don't like that.
I don't, we're not.
No, we're not, yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, well, they're, they're out there, that's why I can see.
Yeah.
Not facing toward the public side of the road. Not facing toward the public side of the road, I guess, it's internal, it would never be wrong.
Yeah.
But if it's going to be facing ninety-six, that wouldn't necessarily be something we'd be crazy about.
Yeah, it's a variable changing board, you know, like we've had signage coming in and ones. Again, if, if that was a plan of yours, I might present a little bit of a challenge to have, you know, changing advertisement board on these chargers, so, yeah. Okay, that's all I got.
Adrian? Okay, two page worth over there.
All right.
First. By the way, tell from fire department, I'm gonna guess he's gonna hit some of the higher points there.
Um, so one, one just got installed.
On a charger, right?
A charger, an AC, I don't know if level one or level two, and I don't know if even a DC, that's. Um, Walmart class. Do you guys know anything about that?
I understand.
Is that full AC?
I believe it's DC.
Okay, so then. Then they build transformers, obviously to step up the current, and then they got AC lines going, you know, ten, ten, twenty feet, let's say, to the stations. So then in the stations is where they convert AC to DC. Now, I, I work at our genie, so I know, on the gas side, but I know a little bit a lot about electric, only get a lot of stuff. So what I'm getting at is, is there ever, can you think of any times when that station can be damaged? It doesn't trip the circuit breaker, uh, power doesn't go off, and the electric goes to ground? What, what would happen is you have step potential. You know what step potential is? You would have step potential, and you may not kill someone, but somebody with a pacemaker, if they're in that area, could get a jolt, pretty big jolt, if not back, so it requires a lot of attention. Um, now, I don't know where you're planning to put these. I have her closer, close to the road, so that's, 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 that's step potential. Yeah, I, here again, I think, uh, we're, we're just going to, uh, get our genie involved and get the provider of the DC, uh, stations to guide us through, make sure they're safe as possible, right? I, I don't know, I don't know what that is, Scott, unless you want to speak.
Yeah, but I mean, basically this, it's just, I'm sure it's always, basically you have the, the air guitar, how to be educated, right? And they may not be, you know, because we keep a lot of, they do a lot of, not say, so we add tools, but could obviously create an issue for a person with another problem, right? It may not affect the arrival, but I don't basically, if you can actually fix it. I, I don't know, I mean, to, to that point, I have to refer back to a lot of things that have to go back, right? There's, they put a lot of things in place, uh, just like, you know, the main line coming in or the transformer has, you know, if it sees a spike, as you know, it says, we're gonna take so much, we're gonna, we're gonna turn, and you guys are always on a grid, that's it. Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, you know, not being in that, that field, I would just be logically doing the council.
Physically, you're going to have the physical structure around this to the point where nobody's gonna back into it and knock it over.
Yeah, we're gonna obviously.
They're gonna have bolsters and. There'll be a number of safety factors, physical safety factors built in around the charging unit to protect it physically. I think what we're talking there about is some weird electronic or electrical.
Right.
Glitch that would cause that. And by the way, I have a pacemaker, so I ain't making me nervous. It's hard to find anything, period.
Yeah, and I think stuff is so new, but I can only find what's on the ads in North Carolina, because that was what I got, who was actually working on.
So you said you're not gonna be doing a lot as far as service, so there's really not gonna be a ton of vehicles parked that they don't have, like, like any others, like, see them to a breaks.
Yeah, as far as, as far as general weight, as far as looking at it like that.
You mean vehicle preparedness?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just the incoming.
Yeah, just vehicles that lose.
I mean, all you know, okay.
Okay. Um, so these are all electric, and I know Teslas, they do, they have updates, or they are updates. Do those come from you or do they come from?
They, they come from that.
So, Nerdun satellite, you, you wouldn't need.
No, right. No, the vehicles are all, it's all, it's what they're based on, it's just like, you know. I'm like, if you haven't got it right, that's, it's in that base, that's. We go, yeah, just start your car, there, there's an app, so. Same thing, it's amazing how technology has evolved that way. Uh, using the I-Star radio, so to turn, talk to the people, use what accent. Okay, well, to that point, our actions, we're talking to the I-Star baby, understanding people on the car. You know, the way I make sure that you're part of the rescue people, that's all.
Um, one, one thing we've talked about, the board. What are they parking at these? Is there anything that regulates? Is there any, is there anything there or is there a charge if somebody were parked there for an extended time? They said you wouldn't want, um, vehicles parked there. Uh, unless they're.
Tesla, Tesla will find you at the mall if you're there for more than ten minutes after you're charged, they'll start charging you and finding you for keeping your car there. Uh, so then they send an update to your phone and you're.
Yes, yes, if you need to get it off, or you're gonna be, you know, they put these, uh, fines for basically how, you know, the power source, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just, they want to be able to allow that convenience other people.
Oh, yeah.
And actual comes out just because they recognize that those things that are seen. Our actual charging station says that as well, when they could send us notification, if the Tesla vehicle is done charging, it'll send you an email or it's written in my phone, so say, you're all done, please remove the vehicle to allow somebody else to use it, I'll just give you this one. Okay, Tesla takes it to the street, does those PC chargers or so. If they want it, so they say, oh, so you don't deal with it some other time, and they can tell because again, because they know how long the climate is.
Is there a way to turn them off at a certain hour and turn them off at a certain point?
Not that I know.
It's, I mean, it could be, um, it, it runs off the circuit breaker. I mean, I can speak to level two, DC, that probably have to be a little more creation, but I know our DC units, you know, it, it just turned on, it'll turn off, I heard, turn off the circuit breaker, turn off. But then it has to go through another, uh, relearn process.
Recycle.
They have to go through recycle, they sold this back online.
Probably none.
Yeah, sure, it's a long-term entry problem.
Yeah, it depends on who does the charging, does the billing for the charging and however they have their software set up. But the first chargers do, I assume they. Well, I mean, they don't pay after it's fully charged unless there's a, there's a violation, be after a certain period of time. It just wants to charge, it just looks sent there, if they don't do something special.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that probably the location at the mall. I think that's, oh, that's what they have to do with the testy because there's more fraud or like, I don't know, they're very, I'm a shopper, that's who for, and dinner, or this would be not the rush check game, but I think in this, it's really gonna have a small hole.
Right.
Area of shopping that maybe people can do, whether it be in shops or the bus, the street, or basically, basically more facility where we think that the, the transit persons traveling or, you know, neighbor on the corner doesn't have that, mostly they're filled up, they're, they're stomach rated, so.
But your solar chargers wouldn't be out front, that's true. Right. You have to be hiding the building or something, so you have, oh, you have those slow chargers back there, you have, you could, um, locked off some.
Yeah, right.
That depends to, you know, you know, locked off, it's a different thing back there to slow chargers.
Right. And, um, I think of, uh, maintenance cycle on these stations, how often they, they look there. The test, run, test cycle. Basically done.
So our level twos, they actually go through, actually every ten days, it's gone through an actual, uh, customer, a provider, which is still utilized. They will do, and they actually go through, they should be working correctly. They're, again, they're online, so they know if they're not reporting, to say, if we, we've got a problem with, you know, this number one twenty-four. Uh, they'll let us know, if I say, and we'll see if we just go check and make sure that the, the thing is on that, or there's something going on, and, and then that, we'll just give them a call and make sure they're checking.
Okay.
It's actually been pretty.
Very good.
Very easy to.
They'll hold you with time in the DC, yeah, so you, you gotta move that car, that spot. Even if your partner not charged, charging, they, they want you off. Those, those spots that we have, those level twos, always have to remain open.
So they know that there's cameras? How do they know?
Yeah, they just do a visual drive-by or they, I don't know, maybe it's chill cool or something, but we've been notified a few times to make sure that those, uh, oh, you know, it was, I'll tell you how it was, it was, we were having problems in our local station. Uh, and they gotta come out to service, one of them to see what was wrong with it, and they had a car parked in one of those spots and they, they gave us, you know, you can't do that, you have to keep these always open to the public, so. So next, they called us and brought it on up, so.
Are you getting any public down there this summer?
Um, not tremendous amount, we had a few, uh, but they're not the fast chargers. You know, so it's probably the guy that thinks fifty miles to get home, he's not gonna sit there all day, but he'll give us twenty minutes to get fifty miles. And then he's back in his car and.
He showed up to visit, he thought they could get back home, but he had enough range.
Right, there you go, yeah.
Okay, you're anything else?
No, that's it.
I mean, mine were more based on, you already answered the question about battery storage, you're not gonna have your battery storage, because you're not doing that, turning it over, at least for right now. I mean, I, in seven, ten years, you know, or whatever, the industry will change again. And you may end up doing that, or you may still end up saying, the manufacturers still may say, we're not letting anybody but our people change batteries, I don't care how they have, or that they're out of warranty, you're not. But I think it's a little too early for that. So you won't have any battery recycling or battery storage? Um, and you talk about maintenance requirements, my other one is, are you going to have any special equipment on site for fire abatement? Before the fire department's called, that initial, like, we have fire extinguishers now, that's probably not sufficient to handle any B fire. You're gonna, are you gonna have any special fire apparatus on property? No?
Yeah, I don't know. It's hard to have right as well, I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's some new things out in the market that are out there. Um, I'm not sure even if they've been tested that well. Um, I just see some things, you know, on the, on the flip side of, there's some special flinging that they have, or you can utilize. Um, and we actually, I'd rather actually purchase one, because I definitely want to see how it works. But nobody knows how it's, but no, it's a, it's a substantial investment.
Right.
So we're, we're not sure if it's, it's a, it's a three-time use only thing, it's like a big blanket, it's all just going down a car. Um, it basically just suffocate, doesn't put it out, it just kind of suffocates it. It allows it to burn under the thing, but all it's gonna do is just keep on progressing the fire. I mean, first initial, the first initial pit is everything, where you want that core.
How fast can it melt? Okay, that's all I had. With our supervisor.
Um, nice cushion shop, doing special training they need or?
Yeah.
That's a really.
Uh, we won't have a cushion shop, yeah, so it won't be part of what we're gonna be doing, but. Uh.
Would it go back to a Ford dealer?
Yeah.
Tesla.
Right. It would just be energetic system, but most, most of these vehicles all have, they look at a discount. Some of them are easily get through, some of them are not so easily get through. Um, but they do have a discount, and, and most of the cushion places will do that. Um, you know, actually, most, probably the biggest challenge is not the fact that total scare.
Right.
Right, so, you know.
That's true.
There really is, and, and those guys are, most of them want to go to the first head, ask, okay, how do I do this thing? You know, I know that, you know, from one of the first responders side, there's a lot of challenges in terms of education, uh, things that make sure that it's, there's a lot of the unknown, right? It's a scary part of it. Um, but I go across, they tell us basically, find an orange wire and get rid of it, you know, plus you did that, you gotta slow it, and you can pull out with it, you're not. Um, the biggest thing is you can't pierce the, you know, pierce the actual energy box, and that makes you, those are the things that, and it all falls back to training. Off of that, you have to train, train, they would understand what you're doing.
If you tell them didn't install a level two charger on your crane part. I did see a chief hook up to it earlier in the month, so it's personally the long thing, or usage.
It's coming.
And.
I'm, I'm not saying, you know, I'm a commissioner of the manner, and I know we did actually talk with peers about finding a black part of them. And it's, it's a heavy bill to pay, but, you know, we're running an access of five calls a policy a year.
Don't waste it.
Find out, it's coming due.
Well, yeah, our fire call, you will not know how to accept that.
It's true, they will love that.
Okay. Anything else you want? Okay, we'll start at the back, I don't care who wants to go first there. Okay.
Well, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Some of them answered, uh, as far as the, the charging stations, is there something like they formally gather at gas stations where if somebody's still in their car, they can quickly get a uh, uh, stop the charging process, you know, they can run to it? Or is there a breaker that's gonna be clearly marked that they, some, they plug it in and, and start sparking, they can overload the mode area and get a. Is that something, I mean, I would think they probably would have that, because I don't know, the fire department, they get their store manager to come out of Long Fire, if you find them. Uh, you know, somebody's wanting to their car and they're not gonna know enough to unplug it, because you're scared to touch it. Is there a remote fuel switch that would be installed in those places or no? Just curious, I mean.
Yeah, I, I'll be honest with you, not, not, I, I don't, I guess I don't know.
Well, I'm.
It's a smart idea, right, so, but at a gas station, right, you have that thing you're going to have to look.
Electric fires can easily change, once you can get the power shut off, the class A higher, so, but here, people not being in the know, I certainly would be a little, maybe that cover is electric, I am gonna take tries, I'm gonna look for the mushrooms, it's, but is it remote or is it close by? I know they have that filling station, and they also have them up by underneath the counter somewhere, but it's, it's, I'm just curious if that's something that they've thought about, or is it necessary? Is that necessary?
I think, just because we've already referred back to technology warriors of your charging stations, they're, they have, they're, are they, are they internalized, you know, and they'll probably have to wait for a couple of incidents to happen, and then, oh, maybe we should have crossed that bridge too. I get it, I'm not trying.
Yeah, no, I get it, no, but.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's. As far as the building, is there any kind of suppression system? Like, you know, I know in computer areas where they have a lot of computers, the ESL, they have a S A P, are you gonna, if you don't want to be anywhere near one, that's. Yeah, and that's, and if you're a firefighter, it better be on S U P A, but is there gonna be something like that? That disperses. As far as. Yeah. I mean, I know it's electrical, but then again, but like, I don't want current.
I think the building is too small for this, especially.
Really, not storing.
And storing, they can do.
Yeah.
Oh, but I mean, something should have, so, a pre-existing building.
Yeah, right.
So it's, it's not required. Does have an emergency stop disable on these chargers? On the unit, I just looked it up, the ones we're getting, so it does have.
Uh, it's, it's remote or is it right next to it?
No, it's right next to it, it says emergency stop button disables charging. Now, put.
Yeah, it's like in normal gas station, they're, they're remote, it's on that right by the pump, which, I know they have. But the two, you want outside the front door, and some of them have it up to the town, which is a little bit of that, so. Yeah, no, and it's, you know, as far as the weapons class they've taken, they do show you where you can kill the power, uses of the trunk, or somewhere where you can kill the power to the orange cable. In a crash, it's maybe not easy to get to, in a, in a situation like a fire, if you're supposed to check the trunk, if there's a car or fire, you don't leave it unopened. And if it's safe, I suppose you could go in and switch, put that switch, and that would, at least less of the chance of one juice being produced from the vehicle, and then, you know. And then the other last question I had, it sounds without a baby, but are these vehicles containing fireproof stuff like cushions and the plastics and all that other stuff, is that any different than a normal vehicle, it's all same? There's no.
There's a lot of fire resistance stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
And I think that's why.
Gras.
Yeah, between.
Battery on seats and stuff, probably the same normal cars.
Uh, I'm not quite sure of battery in the seats, but everything that we looked at video wise on the uh, and TSB. And whatnot said that there is a a number of layers that protects the passengers from the lithium ion batteries. So, uh. I'd have to get what the materials or substance made of, but there is quite a bit of insulation between you and those batteries. The whole idea is keep the batteries as cool as possible, that'd be up obviously.
Well, yeah, most and the car parts cut out different ways, I do compartment break. So, and it does get into the passenger compartment, but I'm concerned there because there's a lot of crap that comes out of there.
Sure.
And whether it's electric or gas powered, it's, you know, so it's a matter of, is there anything different because it's electric? You gotta do that. Fire resistant.
I would think the same thing would be if they're. If EVs in general have any additional. Uh, chemical products that during a fire would give up any additional. Weird gases or anything, they're not, they're pretty standard, so it'd be no different than a typical vehicle fire, so kills from a battery, so.
I wouldn't think so, but I just, you know.
Yeah, you never know. We gotta ask the question.
When it's on fire, we're not gonna ask you.
Now, come back, we go to Don, you got me?
One question out of the answer. Um. And you've got forty eight thousand of these charging stations in the United States and only six thousand of them are DC. There are better studies as to uh, whether there are incidents on these faster charging systems, heating up the batteries quicker or causing. Shorter within the battery, in general, catching the battery on fire because of the building of the.
I couldn't find any.
Not as a doctor, this one, I guess.
At that time, trying to research that, but those.
I mean, they're very, very small minority of the DCS compared to the overall home road charging station.
They're extremely expensive. And that's really the barrier, I think, for a lot of towns and and businesses.
About sixty thousand for each one.
You need more power to run those two over.
Oh, yeah.
The grid for those fast chargers, I you're not gonna have that, I don't know, it's a background person's like. Ever.
Right.
What is the voltage that one of these vehicles put out? How much voltage is that coming out of the battery?
The voltage is in the car itself.
Yeah, run the car. What kind of voltage are we talking?
Well, I I I know most of these four way, they put this, they stand. They can they can put over amperages, all the motors will play bomb that way.
But the charging voltage in Amherst is pretty high in the DC truck.
It is.
That's why it has to be on a main grid and everything else.
Well, I get that, but I just wondering what the car.
Inside cars.
I think these manufacturers are a little bit different too, because I I know that Tesla is usually a four way. As long as I'm up the ever time, I've seen back to my now, I'm sure they give more information on that for you, but.
Oh, uh. Now, will your chargers be able to do Teslas and other vehicles? So it's gonna be more of a generic.
Yeah, the actual. The actual one itself, the charging port, it's actually a universal, the only one that is really standalone is Tesla.
Right.
Tesla has a different bathroom that they actually give to the customer. That they give to it as well. And that's the only reason.
Anything else, Don? Eric?
Well, you gotta remember where we're crawling stage. Some of us have gone through. Uh, automation of equipment and stuff over the times. And so you know that it's still too early to tell a lot of things.
Right.
It might be nice if we could get someone, maybe R and B, that can explain some of the other aspects. You know, and then we answer what I'm more concerned than you can. But, uh, yeah, it'd be, that might be interesting, but again, we're crawling the stage, it's a new thing. There's still things that aren't answered out there and it's not gonna be answered until you get time.
Right.
So.
All right. Mike?
Yes. Um, are you gonna be, um, are you going to provide home install equipment? With the sale of these vehicles? I'll buy a vehicle radio and then you guys, what are I can state to the night, like we're on.
Yeah, so I think what we're gonna try and do is we're 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 not going to install ourselves, but we will. Uh, you know, get a distributor that has a quality at home, a level two charger, and we already talked to a few electricians that installed. These before and give folks the option. Uh, you know, they wanna use our voice and how to do it, but you you can't do it off of one time.
It'll take three days.
Yeah, so.
But I'm just worried with more electric vehicles being available in our town, so that people are gonna be buying them. Getting their charging unit online and wiring it in themselves, then we're gonna have a big problem.
Yeah, that's it.
And third inspection requirement for that?
So how many electrical works does require a third party electrical inspection?
So do they need a permit as well? No permit, but they need an inspection from the town.
Well, I mean, if they have.
So that might be something we would appreciate you telling your. Customers that if they do install one, they need to get the town to have an inspection.
And that does prime it, but not.
Well, yeah.
And then the other was, uh. Will you be doing plug-in hybrids or just electric straight vehicles?
Uh, I think right now what we're doing. Uh, at at the. Store that we have operating right now is our interest is on EVs unless we have a customer that wants a Prius. Or they want, you know, like like Katie had mentioned. It's it's just a it's a transitional vehicle because they don't, they wanna go EV, but they're afraid to go EV. Um, but what 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 we see short term is, yeah, we're selling some hybrids. But if you look at the thirty five billion GMs investing in all these companies. Uh, none of them call for hybrids, none of them want hybrids. They all are saying. You know, we're we're gonna be fully EV, so uh, we will be having hybrids. Uh, I'd probably say it's maybe a small minority of cars because we feel. That the truth cycle is around the forty miles right now, but we do so. Uh, we sold, uh, you know, just a few days ago at dealership, a red four hybrid. Uh, doing a red four hybrid and sold a kind of city hybrid. Um, one was one was a plug-in.
As far as like servicing those, uh, just still keep that at the other front, sorry.
I would imagine, yeah.
And then, uh. How many service pages are you actually gonna have this new book page?
Uh, there are even two.
Yeah, basically, we're only gonna have, um, because the maintenance aspect of it's so small. You know, basically, we went a couple of lips, just to say that we have a service area.
We've had, uh. I'm sorry, we've had customers who protested us three years ago. Um, that have come in and said, we haven't done brakes, we haven't done anything. We haven't been to a gas station in three years. We haven't done anything to start, just wiper plates and inspection. And, uh, that's what we're finding is that they're just, uh. You know, they're very, very, very low on maintenance and, uh. And that's why we're not building big shops. Yeah. It's it's really, it's. It's crazy, I was just talking right now, I'm just, I'm looking, so you guys have. Fifty thousand dollars in toolbox and really real estate store, how one of these cars won't be there anymore. I see you guys were thinking about retooling here. And they laughed, I said, no, I'm serious, this is coming, I'm gonna have to. And, uh, kids. The whole shop, and there's nothing to do, there's nothing to do these cars, you start really looking at them, it's like, man. Even the the door lock cylinders and the things that are in the car, the way they're engineered, they're just, think about, you used to have in these, your your color TV, you had picture tubes. Go to their TV repair shop now, your TV goes, you just throw it out, you get another big screen or anything. I think that's that's pretty much the model of these cars when you come through some. Pull it out, change out the part, but.
Well, to that point, Tesla has, you know, when you have a bomb or a vehicle breaks out like that. Tesla warranty, also kind of excuse you, however, the warranty, Tesla sends a can to the customer. Uh, defects, it's kind of crazy.
Well, they do it, uh, we did open the phone with the phone. Was it safe or pushing the circuit? He was, okay, we don't do this. As far as what you're gonna be putting in this facility, I'm assuming probably air compressor. Refrigeration units for changing out AC, if there's a DC leak, something like that. Um, but nothing. Nothing special besides what you could already have.
Yeah, no, as far as it, as far as it's impossible, this is a day in the shop, it really. Won't have that stuff, it's not what we had for a long time.
Right.
Just cleaning product. Just, yeah, basically just cleaning the car and and most of the stuff nowadays, it's all. You know, launch on it, most of the car things are the same way, they're all.
Any other thing? Tim?
Um, you you answered a lot of the questions I've had already, you know, the batteries and stuff. There's some uniform permit, I have some EMS related issues that relates to training and equipment and stuff. But, uh, with these new vehicles, will you be able, is there a plate near registration here or somewhere on the vehicle? That tells that it's an AC or DC type of battery system? If I if I turned that right, I'm not sure if I did or not. But, you know. You know, just saying what type of unit you're working with.
I think they're all DC, aren't they? Because they're batteries, they're all lithium ion.
Okay, I'd be trying to make sure. Yeah, okay, I'd probably be making sure because. Yeah. So that's all, I just wanted to make sure. I'm still learning about this and stuff, so.
All right. Over in the corner here.
I have any questions?
Thanks. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
So when it goes back to your new shop, you're looking at like, you said maybe two lifts. So you're gonna be like a wash guy and a service guy, or you're gonna do more down the street right now? How are you gonna? So your name repairs, they're being very minor, obviously, but. Are you having a mechanic on site all the time there doing it? There's not that much work, are you gonna?
Um, I'd like I'd like to be able to have somebody there to sort of be, you know, because it's a separate dealership, right? So all of all this, all of all this, the EV corners are different type of animals. All right, so that has to be more involved with that type of vehicle. So to answer that question is, at least have one person there, maybe two guys, things like that. Uh, and obviously you can keep out, we're sure of wash guy here.
Changing tires.
What he's gotta do, right?
So eventually do brakes and.
Wiper.
Yeah, I can tell you.
It's gonna be pain in the can if you didn't do a lot, as you say, there's not much to do.
It's tires though.
Well, you're kind of. Based on sales too, so all along. We're gonna start off. I mean, you know how sales goes with any new location, if you you have certain productions, it takes a while to get to where you can sustain.
Right.
Full time person, but we can flip flop, we can flip flop any shots of them, these two mechanics, but. We certainly hope to build up to a full time.
The worst case is not able to have pistol locks that go in. Right, because instead of a whole lot of tools, you need to supply the tools for this new shop, if they have some new back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody else think of any other questions while we're going around? Oh, two people online, okay. Online, there are two people online. Anybody got any question? Anybody online, got any question? Okay, anybody else in the room have any questions that we didn't get to or you came up with in line?
I think the only other thing I just thought of, I'm sorry, was when you find out about the charging stations or. Um, the chargers, what the, I don't know where you're planning, what you got? But I mean, is there, do they have like a distance that RG says they can only be?
Yeah, most.
Four hundred feet off with the power line, that's max or something, you know, just because of the power distance, they don't want to run a line.
Yeah.
I wanna know what their regulations would be. For that.
Yeah, we, uh, we met with RG on site, uh. Uh, we, they pretty much told us, you know, what we told them, you know. Where we wanted to put them, which was very upfront, right behind the road, so people need to use them, they don't have to come all the way to the dealership to use them. Uh, I do know that they're they're going to, uh, put the power, uh, underground to those charging stations, so it won't be any overhead wire. Yeah. And it's not very, it's it's literally right across the driveways where they're getting it off the pole, so. Um. I would imagine that if a normal space is eight feet wide, that these would probably tend to. Because there's a, obviously you have to walk around and plug these things in and whatnot. Um, but no, they haven't given us any guidance on how far they have to be that. But I but I know that the charging station people definitely have that information for us.
Yeah, I just I just wanted to bring it up now, so you have time.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Bring it harder.
Yeah.
The other.
It'll be in the site, but.
I have a little other stuff.
Yes. No, that's the one.
I would want to know, if David said, well, we can't drive for eight hundred feet or something, so much hole to.
Right. I thought one more.
Go ahead.
As you're laying out the locations for those, it's something that. What I wanna think about is like long term down the road is, you know, having one space to accommodate, uh, for trucks towing a vehicle. You know, because if the Ford Lightning's out there towing a boat. Then he's somebody to get charged, that might be nice to have. Want to be.
That's a really.
Well, yeah, maybe the last one, there were about two spaces.
You've got the the new trucks coming out, the Rivian and the Ford Lightning and that's towing and stuff, and you have the tow states right there. You got the RV place right next door.
Yeah.
So, and I don't think they're going into charging station, at least we haven't heard about it. So, uh, the big over.
But yeah, just, you know, down the road, ten years from now, I mean, that's that is the way we're going. Yeah. People will be holding something and trying to uncover something, it's a little bit challenging.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if that motorcycle place hasn't introduced a couple of electric, uh, dirt bikes or something.
I haven't heard. I haven't heard, but I, you're right, I'm surprised, they're starting to put them out.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Harley shop.
That's. Harley's making some electric ones now, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're.
Well, the last, uh. I don't think you would be impressed with that, the last Emmy was made about a month ago.
Yeah. And we're gonna stop making the charging challenge, okay? They're gonna, this is the last year for the charging challenge. Period.
Yeah.
Period, the whole body style.
Yeah, they're already out with their their own entries. Yeah, there's a lot of.
You can imagine EVs can be forced on a motorcycle, just like a ditch of cars.
Oh, absolutely.
There are no questions, it's gonna be pushed.
Okay, so I think unless anybody's got anything else, I'll close this, uh, session. I certainly appreciate it. We didn't know what we didn't know, and I think we know more now. I think there'll be more questions. As your site plan comes up and as we look at spacing and. Moving around and then you start talking about having one with a. Trailer, make sure you've got turning little bits and stuff, let it so it can get in there and get out, you know. With that, so they can do that, so, uh, but, uh, yeah, especially with the RV place next door. Uh, that's a real big catch. I mean, it's just the end unit, I mean, that one probably will be, you know, you'll have to have more. And I would think, just me thinking, that if you set it up to where you can expand it as well. In case you'll need expansion as we get more and more EVs, et cetera, et cetera. You know, you may wanna put in another three. Stations for six more vehicles or something in the future. I don't know, I've been by the Tesla charger at Eastview and seen it full.
Right.
With three cars waiting to get in and people with stuff on their cars, because they were traveling. Waiting to get a charge, and I've seen the other one, the Walmart area. Um, pretty full, I think there was one spot left.
Was it a planning board or a zoning board? The director said there was an application that had twenty board charging stations in Eastmore.
That would surprise me a bit.
It wasn't that long ago when you worked with those Tesla stations in their own.
There's nobody there, yeah, yeah. I went through there, like I said, I went through there. Maybe two months ago and everyone was, and there were people just waiting to get in. And you wonder, like I said, if somebody's in there, Starbucks having a coffee and just letting it sit there, you know, and, uh. But yeah, it was, it was, I never would have thought that, but Eric, oh. Eric?
Keep in mind, when they keep saying they're gonna have Tesla and gas and stuff. Eventually, they won't have the personnel to handle the volume of cars out there. And so like RG or Rochester Transit, they had guys that have been on to the. Manufacturing, the training for their, uh, electric vehicle. So that's probably gonna be something too. Now, that could be thirty, forty years down the road. But it's something that, you know, like I said, we're in the stage of crawling, we're not, we're not even walking yet, this area. There's gonna be a whole lot more questions to me as we go.
I just had this feeling, just my feeling.
You gotta start somewhere.
Well, you gotta start somewhere, but I got a feeling this train's going faster than any of us even think. Especially with the money they're dumping into charging units and and the rest and the new mandates that they're putting out there for. You know, no selling, no gasoline cars at the thirty five in California. You know, no selling, no gasoline cars at the thirty five in California. New York will be next. We got to keep up, ours will be thirty four probably, uh, you know, just to keep up, so it's trading.
I was at Rochester Transit thirty morning in, uh. G T C meeting, but they did bring up that, uh, they're, went in for a grant for a hydrogen station. And they got to pop their four hydrogen buses because they're not getting the mileage on the electric buses in the winter time.
Oh, I'm sure, in the winter time, yeah. Well, and that's the other piece, that we do get into the hydrogen, I think that brings up a whole other group of. The same types of questions about, you know, the, the product and the fuel and. Fire issues and storage issues and. Is there more maintenance on a hydrogen vehicle? Because I think they're more similar to the. Term combustion engine than they are to electric vehicles, so where the hell are we going here with all this? It's going to be an interesting ride.
And the exhaust is water.
Right? Oh, man. All right, thanks, no problem. We'll just close the meeting and I appreciate, I really appreciate the general information. We're trying to get into your site plan or anything like that, we will eventually. But we wanted to get this done, and I wanted the fire department to hear what's going on because. We're partners in all of this and we don't want to have any issues in the community, and I know you don't either.
No, not at all.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody, for coming, thanks, it's all you guys, I appreciate it.